Okay, you ready? You ready? Let me call this meeting to order the regular session of the Library Board of Trustees today, January the 12th, here at the City Hall complex. We'll now move on to item two on the agenda, the Pledge of Allegiance. Nan, would you please lead us in the place?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Nan. We'll now proceed to item three on the agenda, the Call to the Public. Juanita, is there anybody under the Call to the Public?
Chairman, Veronica, not at this time.
Okay, then we're going to go on to our discussion items. Item four, we have the pleasure this morning of having the Santa Cruz County manager here present today via Zoom. We're welcome to our meeting, Mrs. St. John. We feel honored that you are able to attend via Zoom, especially since you've had some problems with COVID there, but at least you're here now. So the first item that we have, Mrs. St. John, is a library district presentation that's under you, so the floor is yours, Mrs. St. John. Thank you. No, no, we're done. No, we'll go ahead with your presentation and then we'll go on. Okay, thank you, Mrs. St. John. What we're going to do now is just go down the line here and see if there's any comments, questions, or concerns, and we'll start with you, Nan.
Yes, hi, Jennifer. I have two, excuse me, I have two questions. One, how does this work out with city-owned property versus county-owned property in separating those out? And secondarily, do you have any thoughts about the best way to begin to sell this idea if we should decide to proceed? Thank you.
Okay. Juanita, you're next.
Yes, thank you so much for coming. You did answer my question about, this is from the Board of Supervisors, correct, that they will be making this decision. And we, well, I guess you answered my question when Nan asked about how to go about, if you had any ideas about how to call meetings and influence our public. Thank you.
Thank you, Juanita. Go ahead, Jennifer. Okay, if that's all, Juanita. Okay, Ed?
My only concern is it has to go to a county-wide popular vote.
It does not. It does not, sorry. It's just the Board of Supervisors.
Oh, it just goes directly to the Board of Supervisors then?
Yes.
In discussion, okay.
Anything else, Ed? That's all. Maya?
Thanks for your presentation. It was very informative, and I really appreciated the part about the levy and the amount of taxes we're talking about, because I think that's a pretty big issue. And I don't have any further questions at this point. Thank you.
Is that it, Marva?
Yes.
Thank you. Brian?
Hi, thank you very much. A couple comments about your calculations on the tax rate. I think it would be more, it would be more realistic to base it on the $600,000 that is the current budget, rather including the budget of the Town of Patagonia Library. The Town of Patagonia is a very independent community, independent-minded, and I'm not sure if they would be willing to join. So I would like to-
They might opt out.
They might opt out, so I would prefer to see the calculation based on 600,000. And another, I always believe it's a fallacy to quote a rate for a $100,000 house, because there are very few $100,000 houses in this county. A more accurate calculation might be based on, say, $250,000. So to rework your calculation on those numbers, I think would be more realistic. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Go ahead, Jennifer. Go ahead. Brian, is that all?
That's all.
Thank you. Veronica?
Thank you very much, and I apologize for coming in late. I do have a question relating to any other experiences that you've had going into this process, and the successful ones, obviously, are what I'm interested in, and how long ago that happened, and any insight you can give us as to how you move forward to make it successful.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is that it, Veronica? Okay, Jennifer, the only thing is, as you're doing this research on what Mr. Vanderbilt indicated, when we talk about bond issues or any kind of raises in the tax rate, as is it imposed on a home, whether it be from the state, the county, the city, or the school district, everybody uses the $100,000 valuation. It's easier to say, if my house is worth 250,000, well, that's 1.5 times more. But the individual that has a value of less than $100,000 or somewhere in there, they don't look at it at a different perspective. Well, they're talking about 250, I can't afford that. So it's customary to use that $100,000 valuation. I would hate to change it if that's not what the custom is, but it's worth some more dialogue. The other concern, just to make sure that we have an understanding here, because the City of Nogales opted out the last time that this was proposed. What is the role of this Library Board of Trustees if the Board of Supervisors were to approve that? Is there still going to be this board? Is it still going to be appointed in the same manner, or would things change here?
No, that's the one thing that I'm a big stickler for, is the local control. So before I, I have to, I'm not quite convinced now that, you know, and that was one of the concerns of the City of Nogales, that all of a sudden, you know, the City of Nogales originated the public library system here for many, many years, and now all of that, let's just say, authority would evaporate and from the mayor and council and from the city manager that we have. So I'd have to give that really some thought, because now it all goes over to the state librarian, and it goes over to the Board of Supervisors, even though the City of Nogales does have one member of the Board of Supervisors that represents the City of Nogales. But still, it would be something different, and I'd have to compare that to the system as is in place now. So as, what would be your recommendation of what we should, the path that we should follow from here on out? I don't want to come to the next meeting, and we don't have this discussion anymore, and now everything dies away. So what should we do as this board, as far as what, we want to support this or not?
Okay, so, Mrs. St. John, how about if I put this down on the agenda for our meeting on February the 10th of next month, as a follow-up to the research that you've done on the questions that were asked today? Okay. Yes. Okay, Mrs. St. John, Nan has asked for, to ask another question, so usually when another member asks, I'm going to go down the entire line, so everybody has equal opportunity here, okay? Nan?
Sorry, thanks. Yeah, when it comes to the question of authority over the library, I wonder if we should consider when we're approaching this, as far as the city's position might be, to rephrase it to responsibility. In the case of the city, they would be offloading the responsibility. The county would be taking on a responsibility with the district. And the question that I have is, do we have any kind of a sense of the amount of responsibility that that would involve, which I think you were just basically talking about? And does the county, or is the county willing to take on more responsibility with all the things that they have going on? I think we need to ask that question at some point.
Right, right. And would such a loss still allow us to contract with the city to provide you services? But again, the county would be given the county board supervisors, but the great tax rate, and there's a chance that we would want to be held to have the responsibility as you mentioned. So, and it's probably a pretty big chance, that was a pretty good chance, right?
Okay, is that it? Juanita?
Yes, my recollection, you mentioned the city never coming, making a formal withdrawal from that program. My recollection is that it was not a formal response at all. It sort of was dropped. The whole issue was dropped before it got that far. However, I did, I contacted the Patagonia librarian at that time, and the, what is it, the friends of the librarian in Patagonia, and they were definitely, would not, would opt out. They had, at that time, I have no reason to believe they've changed, they were not interested in having a county library. Thank you.
Thank you, Juanita. Ed?
Yeah, my concern here is that a new board is placed in the oversight of the library through an election process, as I understand, correct? Or is the board appointed by the Board of Supervisors and the authority that the board would be assuming for the operation of the library district? What is the actual distinction, then, for the roles of a district board having in relation with the Board of Supervisors?
The Board of Supervisor.
The library. Right.
Okay. Okay, that answered it, okay? Marva?
And on that same note, they will be making the decisions for the library, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have any other comment.
Thank you, Marva. Go ahead, Jennifer. Brian?
Thank you. My thoughts are, I have to be careful of my thoughts, because sometimes I'm putting the cart before the horse, but one thing I would like to comment in some notes I made is that in the year 2006, the City of Tucson and Pima County unified their libraries, and so that might be a good reference point to research and see how they did it, what obstacles they confronted, and how they confronted them. So to a point, we could look into that. And I guess that's my last question. Thank you.
Thank you. Veronica? Okay, Jennifer, we'll put this on and bring this subject up again at our February meeting to go ahead and see what we have as a follow-up, to continue the dialogue, and see where we want to proceed from there. Jennifer, you've got the second item on the agenda. Mr. Kissinger, did you want to say?
Do you ask, Mr. Chairman, what defines the district?
Oh.
Is it county?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Jennifer? Good morning. Real quickly, what defines the district?
What defines the district?
If you-
Regardless if you opt in or opt out. Thank you, Jennifer.
Good point.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kissinger. That's a good point. I thought by Patagonia opting out, the NSs don't really opt out then, huh? Okay. Okay, so then, alrighty, that's a good point. Thank you, Mr. Kissinger. Mrs. St. John, we're going to go ahead and move to item two on the agenda, Sonoyta Library Expansion Update. Would you please, I know you have, going to share the screen there.
Yes, I was just going to say that I'm going to reach out to some of the state librarians and get you that information, and maybe even a presentation from Yuma County. So, yeah, I'll work on that. Thank you.
Thank you. A little bigger. That's okay, that's better. Go ahead with your presentation.
Okay.
Go ahead, Brian.
And one question came to mind, and this is just forward-thinking for both the county and for the library administration. We're planning on expanding the facility, the library in Sonoyta, and everyone needs to be prepared to expand their budgets. Just to build out the building and then not be prepared to have more activities, the cost of those activities, more books, more time, more hours by the librarians, everybody needs to be prepared, beginning with the county and their budget and the budget that the, the library prepares. That's all, thank you.
And I'll ask, Mrs. St. John, we're also fortunate to have Mr. Kissinger here who brings a wealth of knowledge, and I'll have him on the next two items on the agenda, give us how the budgeting process works so that this board can make a sound recommendation through the City Library Director to Mr. Kissinger. Marva, you're next. Marva has no questions. Ed, you're next. No questions from Ed. Veronica, you're next.
I wonder if you could address it, I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's your turn. It's your turn. Oh, did I say, no, Juanita. Juanita, I'm sorry.
Yes, my question is, could you address the timeline on this? And I'm just curious about when, when things will, will happen so I can tell the, tell the interested parties.
Yes, I haven't been doing very good on the timeline, so I'm a little I was going to address that. So I need, we need a feedback, which I find to do at the end, you know, like I said, without a community meeting. And then, once we did that, I believe, so increasing stuff that is, are dedicating time, I was responsible for all this, like, this next thing I think is to let it priced out. Or corporate tax, on what the cost would be. Yeah, I was trying to, trying to, I know it's, you know, I was, these only two months would be off on this community meeting.
Thank you.
Juanita, that concludes your comments. Okay, Nan?
Yes, just, just one question. Do you, Jennifer, at, at this point, do you have any idea of the actual gain in library space from what it is now? So I don't know what the square footage is now, but how much is the library gaining in this current plan?
So, so I don't know square footage wise, but I can kind of mark right now the library is roughly in about this area.
What, I can't, oh.
You can't see the room?
Yeah.
She has the
The sitting area and the computer station, can you see that?
Yes.
So roughly there in the sitting area, the
Okay.
I do not recall the lockers.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Jennifer, before we move on, I'd like to use this opportunity that we have yourself here and Mr. Kissinger. If Mr. Kissinger can just go up, based on a comment that was made by Mr. Vanderbilt, that more money will be needed to go ahead during next fiscal year to provide books, whatever tables, or what we might need to provide services therefore, based on the recommendation of our library director. If Mr. Kissinger, if you can just outline how the budget process works, because there's people here that really don't understand that, and, and you can complement that presentation also, Mrs. St. John, so they can see how it works, how it's shared 50/50, and if there's more than we wanna recommend, the process it goes through. So there's an understanding of the board. Mr. Kissinger, if you'd please share your knowledge on that?
Thank you, Dr. Veronica. So, the budget process in the city of Gales will probably be starting here very soon, where each of our departments, to include the library department, puts together their budget and their needs for the year, submits it, and then it goes through a review process. It's pretty strenuous with our finance director, and usually the city manager sits down and we try to identify what wants are, needs and what have you, what has to be in the budget, what would be really cool to have in the budget, and, and things like that. Then we balance our budget to the anticipated revenues, and then, so we present a balanced budget to mayor and council for their approval. At that time, we have, usually we have budget hearings with mayor and council, and we show them what staff is recommending as that particular year's budget. Typically, it's balanced. If there is some undiscussionary funds or unspent funds, mayor and council also have opportunities at that time to weigh in on possibly funding some special projects or items that might have fallen off the budget. But we typically do a zero-based budget, and we ask our directors just to take last year's budget and forget about it and start anew. And it's a hybrid of that because, of course, your employees usually stay the same employees, the, the salary ranges usually stay the same salary. So we don't recreate the entire budget, but we do ask our directors to analyze all of their spending throughout their budget and make solid recommendations. Not just present next year's budget, or last year's budget, they actually have to go through it, each one and talk about it.
Mr. Kissinger, so then the total budget that's approved by the mayor and council for the library department, that is split 50/50 between the county and the city?
That is correct. The operating budget, right, Jennifer? It's the operating budget, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. Now, capital is a little bit different, Jennifer? Some capital's different?
Yes.
Yeah. Some capital, some capital, we don't split 50/50 with the county.
Okay.
And that's one of the biggest issues that, not the issues, but the struggles we have if you were to combine two different entities. In other words, if we went to the library district, okay, what do we do with capital? You know, do we split it? You can't split it in half. We own it, you can't get a building and break it in half, so, you know, how do you, how do you deal with that? And if the city and the county doing an investment, how do they protect their investment and stuff along those lines? So it's, it's a dialogue that has to happen. It's not impossible, but it's a definitely a, a dialogue that has to happen.
Okay. Mrs. St. John, do you have anything to add to Mr. Kissinger's presentation?
Typically, it's a wash with, with animal control.
Control.
So it, the budgets are almost identical, so it's almost like a wash, you know?
Okay. So then, getting back to this item two, Mrs. St. John, the two presentations that you made on item one and item two, I'll have them back on the agenda for our February 10th meeting, so you can give us an updated, updates on that, okay? And that's all that we need you for, Mrs. St. John. Thank you for attending. That's okay. Now we'll move on to item three on the agenda, the main library hours, and the main library secured. I'm gonna take them both, because I know Mr. Kissinger has another meeting he has to get off to, and I want him to address these issues, and if there's gonna be an impact on this year's budget for this. So on item three, the main library hours, after 5:00 PM Saturdays, Mr. Vanderbilt, would you use this opportunity to express your concerns?
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Veronica. Well, yeah, I'm, I'm a proponent of increasing the hours in the library, bottom line, into the evenings, beyond the afternoon closure time, and Saturdays also. In my few comments I've had with residents of Tubac where I live, everybody is rather incredulous that the library is not open on Saturdays. Everybody just says libraries need to be open on Saturdays, and that's, and be available to the public. Our library is not, currently. And so this is one of the items, as a board member, I'm really interested in pushing and promoting, is getting the library open on Saturday. And of course, there are budgetary considerations to be taken. There's also creative ways of working around with the existing budget. That might mean, say, might close on Tuesday, so that you can open on Saturday. Or, or close earlier on a given day of the week, so that you can stay later on another day of the week. This is, this would be a decision, discussion for the librarian, if, and her staff, but these are other options, but going, so the overall conversation is extending the hours open, to open on Saturday, and perhaps into some evenings.
Mr. Kissinger, if you could just help us with that, as it impacts your current budget that ends June 30th, and then, Danita will be making recommendations for the new budget starting July the 1st, that she will present to us. If you could please help us with that, Mr. Kissinger.
Sure enough, I have to defer back to Danita real quick. Mr. Vanderbilt's looking at changing our
Can you move your, just move the mic up a little? Mic? Yeah.
It'll turn.
So, he's talking about changing our operations in one of our branches, which would be the Tubac branch. Currently, do we have employees at the Tubac branch, or is it, I'm not sure how that works, real quick, could you remind me, Danita?
There is a part-time clerk at the Tubac branch that is paid through, through a grant. So those hours are set. I will try to request that, but that money's coming in from a grant, so she's set with those hours.
How many employees do we have at the Tubac branch?
One.
One. Okay, so if, and currently, those employees are working 40-hour a week, or are they in a part-time?
Part-time, 20 hours.
So we got 20 hours' worth of employees out at the Tubac branch?
Correct.
Okay. And my understanding is that we would like to And my understanding is that we would like to adjust those hours of operation, those 20 hours, and reallocate them?
Is that correct, Vanderbelt?
Or are you, are you asking to add to them? And maybe get more people on that grant to extend hours? And there's got to be a give and take somewhere, right?
Right. Brian?
Well, I was not specifically referring to Tubac, I was to, but to the main library here on Grand Avenue. But to extend the hours in Tubac, an hour or two a day would be a great thing. I mean, it's, it's an open discussion. I would like to see, I would like to see more hours across the board.
Sure.
But at the same time, I don't want to be, you know, go overboard with my requests I want to find, but...
Right.
Yeah, but basically, I want to see the, the main library on Grand Avenue open on Saturdays, and a few more hours in the evenings.
So typically, it's a give and take. If we do open up on Saturdays, then we have to accommodate that somehow or another. And then also, we probably want to analyze it a little bit with your patrons, find out what your patrons are asking you. We would hate to open up or have a library open with nobody in there. That wouldn't be efficient.
Right.
And maybe, Daniza, what you can do is survey your patrons and find out, if we were open on Saturday, would you be inclined to come on Saturday? What, what hours would you like to see? And then bring that data back to, to us, and we can analyze it and see what would be the most effective and efficient way to spend taxpayers' dollars to provide that service, you know, whatever that might look like, right? If there's a large demand for Saturdays, well, then maybe we do some hour adjustments, right? There's hardly any demand for Saturdays, we can, we can look at that, right? Start time, end times, all of those things are totally flexible. I can tell you that we would have to analyze it, our, and marry that up to our personnel manual, and make sure that we're taking care of that. We have personnel issues that we need to do when we assign people to, to work, what's not your typical Monday through Friday, 2:00 to 5:00. We got to, that's a consideration with efficiencies, so, but all of, all of it's doable, so.
Okay, so I guess, Mr. Kissinger, then, based on your comments, we can have the library director, Daniza, go ahead and do that kind of a survey, present it to the board, and then when the board makes a decision of what we would like to see, we could come back and instruct Daniza to get together with you.
To make the recommendations, absolutely.
And we'll go from there.
I think that's a wonderful way to start, just find out, okay, I understand what the board might want, but let's find out what our customers want, and let's, let's see if we can accommodate the customers' needs.
That's fair enough. And the next item, Mr. Kissinger, is the main library security issues. Would you highlight that, Daniza, please?
Excuse me?
Yeah, we're going to go back, but I want to get these two issues, so we can do...
I wanted to speak to the previous one.
No, we're on both of those agendas, and we're going to come back.
So we've had incidents where we've had issues with the bathrooms, and incidents outside the library where the homeless either make a fire or leave things, and we've all, staff has been really good about it, and they've called the police, and we do have incident reports, and it's something that I have brought up to Mr. Kissinger, and we will probably be requesting maybe a part-time security guard, just for the safety of the patrons and staff.
That's it.
That's it.
Are you supportive of that request, Mr. Kissinger?
I heard that in next year's budget, you might be requesting additional employee as a security?
Correct.
For next year's budget?
Correct.
Okay, next year's, nothing for this year?
Correct.
Okay.
Appreciate that. We'll, we'll look at that.
Okay. Mr. Kissinger, I'm going to go down now with members of the board, see if they have any questions or comments on both of the items that you've addressed, item three on the agenda and item four. We'll take them both at the same time to make sure you get to your meeting on time. Maronica?
With regard to Brian's comments, obviously, we have a Rio Rico branch, and I don't recall the date that the survey was done that Brian and Nan worked on so hard, but there was definitely some comment from the Rio Rico folks that wanted Saturday services as well. So it's not just limited to Tubac, and probably not limited to Sonoyta. It's a big issue in some people's mind, and I can speak to this, because I volunteered at the Rio Rico library for a couple of years, and folks really, really did need a Saturday time to come in and do things because they were working. So I did hear that personally. You know, it's not an official survey, but I do want to make that comment.
Awesome.
And with regard to security, is the only option to hire security services, or are there other things we could be looking at in terms of safety for the employees? Because hiring people, given what we know happened last year with a lot of the revenue coming, not coming in as it was supposed to, or as it previously did due to COVID restrictions, are there other, more, as Brian likes to say, can we be creative about different options and not just hiring security? So I'm just tossing that out as something to discuss and think about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Well, I have my notes from the survey, and here, under the City of Nogales, one comment was longer library hours and at least half a day on Saturday service hours in Rio Rico. And under the Rio Rico section, it said, it would be nice if the Rio Rico was open on weekends. So the public has responded to this, to this item as far as ours. Now regarding the security issues, the security issues come and go, depending on the time of year, when the homeless are here, when they're not. One of the most shocking comments was made when I first got on the board, that was two years ago, and there was a gentleman who was an employee, he's no longer with the employee, who commented, he found a syringe, a hypodermic needle in the bathroom. And there was another recent comment where a patron, a young girl, the daughter of a patron, wanted to use the rest, the women's restroom, and the librarian went, knocked on the door to make sure it wasn't occupied, then the young lady and her mother went in, they used the restroom, and it came. But it was the fact that the librarian employee had to, I don't quite use the word "security", but had to surveillance for the use of the patrons. So these are, these are sensitive issues that, I mean, the library is there to check out books and provide informational material, and we're not really there to be law enforcement or cultural enforcement. So it's, it's, this is the issue that we need to confront and deal with. The other issue, of course, the homeless, is how many homeless are there around the library in the evenings? I have no idea myself, but if, is there one, or is there a half dozen? I can't comment, but it's something to know. Thank you.
Okay, Marva?
Just a question for Daniza. Are the bathrooms locked? Do they have to ask for a key to use the bathroom?
At the moment, they are not locked. We are requesting that patrons do have a library card in order for them to use the bathroom, but it has been a sensitive issue, and I know the public does get quite...
That might help with security.
Yeah, they, we just ask them out of courtesy, you know, you have a library card, and they have been, most of them have been okay, and they've showed the library cards. Some have been kind of aggressive towards staff, so, no, it's not locked.
Is that all, Marva? Marva? Hold on, Ed, hold on. Marva, you concluded, okay? Ed, it's your turn.
Yeah, my concern is staff safety, that's what the security issue is. If anybody requires a staff person to be able to oversee the bathroom issues when it comes up, I think the issue of safety for both the patron and the staff is a major concern in the security area. And it's just a matter of management, I guess you can say, and how to best work with it. Is one, if one of the options is to issue keys to get into the library, that might be an issue that warrants concern. If that were the case, and it, it doesn't occupy staff time if a key is issued to a patron, that's a card carry in patron terms, but it's a public library, and it's a public issue. So in relation to that, I would think that the security at the bathrooms can be managed that way much easier and not compromise staff safety. That's my only comment to that, yeah.
Thank you. Juanita?
Security is, you know, an issue, I think, for, say, in Sonoyta, where there's only one librarian on duty for the four hours, and there's, with the police having, or the sheriff having sort of moved, is not present there, that person is alone by herself. So I think, you know, this is something that, that I'm, I think they're trying to address, so the panic button, is that correct?
A panic button was installed a few weeks ago at the Sonoyta library.
Where does that go, the panic button? Because the county sheriff's office is pretty far away.
It goes directly to the sheriff.
Okay, thank you.
Nan?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we did do that survey about library usage, but we could follow that up with a simple clipboard survey at each branch of the library, that just simply asks patrons as they come in, if the Saturday, if the library were open on Saturday, would you be interested, would you be using it? Or is this something that would be really important to you? You know, just, it could be two or three questions, and they could just check off. That might be a good follow-up to get some more input before we go ahead with staff. I think it is important to look at the library, not as, you know, when you, when you go to college and you have a core course, and then you have electives. I don't think we should ever consider the library as an elective, you know, as other departments in the city are staffed to get the job done. And I think the library needs to be considered in that same realm, that they need more people and need more budget consideration to get their job done, to the full service of the community, because it is a service organization. That's all, it wasn't really a question, it's just, I was spouting off. Thank you.
That's fine. Mr. Kissinger, thank you very much for your presence here today, and for the insight of your knowledge and experience here. These two items will be back on the board agenda for February the 10th. If you could please put it down on your calendar to see what kind of a recommendation Daniza comes up at that time, and how you can share if that can be implemented before, during this fiscal year, or after the fiscal year ends and the new one gets started. On behalf of the board, Mr. Kissinger, thank you. Yes, sir, did you have to say something?
Just a few comments, and...
Yes, go ahead.
Before, before I leave, on the survey, one way of determining needs is by looking at use. I've done surveys, I've seen surveys, and a lot depends on who's doing the survey and what's the question you ask. So if you ask somebody, would you like to see this, typically, you're going to get, yeah. Would you like the library to be open on Saturday? Heck, yeah, why not? I would. Anybody would answer that. Would you like the library to be opened 8:00, 9:00 o'clock at night? Would that, would you like to see that? Your person, just a normal person, heck, yeah, why not? But if you ask, when do you use the library? When is it that you need to use the library? That's a different type of question. And also, if you ask, would you like the library to be open on Saturdays? And if the answer is yes, okay, what do you feel about Mondays? Which days of the week would you like to see the, open, instead of just leaving it wide open? Because if you just ask, you know, money's no object?
Good point.
No problem. If you ask any of the patrons, would you like to have security here at the library? Nobody in their right mind would say, no, I don't want security, except maybe somebody who's going to do something bad, right? But most of them are going to say, yes. So you, you need to follow up the, the surveys. But the best way typically to see levels of service and when services are needed are to look at your users. Unfortunately, I don't know if the library, you were open on Saturdays at one time, weren't you, Daniza?
Yes, we were open for quite a few years, and those eight hours were not used. The most that was ever used was 12 to 4.
So you can look at your data. How many books are you checking out on? How many people are walking through the door on Saturdays? You know, if it's not a large number, then you make decisions based on, on data-driven decisions. That's typically what I would be asking her anyway, if she came, if she came to me and said, John, we need, I, I need to hire a security guard. I know the first thing that I'd be telling Daniza, okay, how many incidents of, have you had? One thing is perceived threats, and one thing is living threats. Homeless and people who use public buildings for other than their intended use is a problem statewide, nationwide, especially in the South, especially in the winter. Tucson has the same problems. We have that same problem here at City Hall. We have public restrooms here, we have people who, if you've seen the benches out there, we bring the cushions of the bench in every night. Why? Because we have people camping out, you know, that's where they were living. It's, it's an unfortunate problem, and something that we need to deal with. You know, we have to lock up restrooms, so they don't get destroyed or used for other than what the typical intended purpose of it is. The intended purpose of our bathrooms, and I know the bathrooms at the library, and our bathrooms throughout the city, are for somebody who needs to go to the bathroom while they're doing business or have something going on with the city. That's the intended purpose. Do people use public restrooms to bathe, to shower, to shave, and do everything else because they have no other facilities? At least they don't think they do, or this is the easiest one? Of course, that happens. So depending on the problem, we, you typically try to address it. I think when Daniza finds a problem of homeless, or people who are using the bathrooms at the library, that it's not the intended use of those bathrooms, she takes the appropriate steps at that time to maybe limit access, and to issue out keys, to have patrons say, can you open the bathroom, to maybe go in and look at it first? But those situations are fluid, they can change. So you would hate to put a policy in place that, you know, the only way you can use the bathroom is to go ask the Ditzan, you have to be searched, and whatever, you know? You don't want to do all those restrictive, restrictions if there's not a problem. But if there is a problem, then our patrons and everybody else has to take a step back and ensure what we're doing and the safety. So those are just my few comments on, on that, just the survey, and, and, and the security and the use of the facilities.
Now, before you leave, Mr. Kissinger, Maronica, did you have a comment you wanted to say? You raised your hand?
I've already spoken to him.
Oh, okay. Then, Mr. Kissinger, we conclude with the time that we have with you. Thank you very much. And with these items, we'll be back on, on the agenda, and we'll see what Daniza works out with you, and hopefully, you might be able to brief us at our next meeting.
And on a personal note, I miss the engagement, Dr. Maronna, and I'm glad to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Kissinger. We'd like to have you here. Thank you. Now let's move on to item five on the agenda, board term expirations of Ed Delsey and Jerry Smith. We have here two individuals whose terms have expired, and you see on your handout here, your board packet, that Mr. Delsey has been a member here, and his term expires February of 2022, and Jerry's expires of March 2022. So we will be bringing this up, and if Mr. Delsey, please get together with Daniza and express to her your interest in everything, and then she'll tell me, and we'll schedule it on the meeting on that. All right? Thank you. Let's move on to discussion and possible actions to approve minutes of December 7, 21 meeting. Marva?
I approve those minutes as they were presented to me after we made corrections.
Would you please make your motion?
I move that we accept the minutes for the, what was the date?
12.
December 7, 21 meeting.
We have a motion by Marva to accept the minutes as presented for December 7, 21 meeting. Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
Ed Delsey seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? Nan? Nan?
One really, really minor correction on page five of the minutes, where we said under future agenda items, the last, next to the last paragraph, that was item seven, we just said in February, we might assist with, we said Denise's wish list, and I think it was with our masks and everything, I think it was supposed to be Denise's wish list. I don't know if it warrants holding up the minutes, but it should be Denise's wish list.
Daniza, you can take care of that with Judith, whatever needs to, okay?
Yeah, okay, thanks.
All right, then. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name, motion carries. We'll now move on to item seven on the agenda, shadow days for board members. Daniza?
So, starting off this new year, I would love to have the board members at the main library, just so you can get a feel for how it's going with pre-pandemic and how you see, so you can see for yourselves who's coming in, when they're coming in. And on Thursday, since our next meeting is going to be Thursday, February 10th, I have assigned Veronica and Jerry to be at the main library from 1:00 to 3:00. And you will just be visiting the different desks and seeing what you're, what people are going to be doing. So that's pretty much it. It's just, you're just going to go around the desks.
Very good. Nan, go ahead.
Yeah, the dates that you've got listed, you have, you mentioned that the Wednesdays after the board meetings. The April date, which you have, is April 9th. I think the board meeting is still the second Wednesday, which would be April 13th.
Oh, my bad. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions on this? Now, I'm going to move on to the next item on the agenda. Board members, 2022 goals. Daniza?
So along the lines of shadow days, and so this is so we can promote a specific library, I have assigned each of you to promote one library. You can either get together, for Nogales, I have Mr. Delcy and Dr. Verona. A simple promotion would just be either taking library cards to an agency or a school, taking a brochure, we do have brochures at the library, just promoting, very easy.
Can you move your speaker a little?
On this side. Can you hear me now? Yeah? Okay, so in lieu of that, it's just so you could just promote the specific library. And I've divided you each, so each library can have your own representation. It's nothing really big, it's just so we get 2022 on a good start. Any questions?
Okay. She'll keep us informed on this. Daniza? Item number nine, 100th anniversary of Nogales Public Library in 2023. Nan?
Yes. Okay. I gave each of you a sheet of paper with some preliminary, very preliminary. I beg your pardon?
Thank you.
Is that a little bit better? Yes? Okay, sorry. I gave each of you a sheet of paper with ideas for how we might start this process, all subject, of course, to what our director would like to do or not do. But I just thought it would start us off. I think it is, the sooner we get started, if we're going to do a celebration, the better we will be. We do need, I think, a committee to start the process, and we need to determine whether we want to celebrate this for one day, or a week, or a month, with different celebrations. So thoughts are welcome at this point. I know you probably haven't had time to look at the whole sheet, so we can-
Yeah. Nan, with your permission, why don't we go ahead and give the board time to digest this, and I'll put this on the agenda for the next meeting when we can come back. And also, Daniza, if you could set up some funds aside to put into the budget so we can use for the celebration, to have some resources for the celebration, financial resources. Brian?
Thank you. When you place this on the agenda for next month, I would like it to be the first item because I would like both Mr. Kissinger and Ms. St. John's to hear our comments. I want to begin to elevate the issue and the image in front of these local administrators and prepare them step by step for this celebration and for the budgetary requirements that we're going to ask of each institution.
Thank you, Brian. We'll now move on to item five on the agenda, board reports. Current events summaries must be brief, and there cannot be any proposals, discussion, deliberation, or legal action taken. Nan?
Nothing at this point.
Juanita? Ed?
I'm still trying to get confirmations from both the State Corporation Commission and the IRS for the 501(c)(3) for FANS. And it's a bureaucratic procedure that I have to go through, and I'm working with them. I've got some correspondents that just came in, so.
Thank you. Marva? Brian?
Nothing.
Veronica? Okay, we'll move on to library director's report. Number one, technical support at libraries. Daniza?
I just wanted to bring the board up to date on a few of the issues that we've had. The speed, the internet speed at the Sonoya Library continues to be very slow, and I have reached out to our E-Rate consultant in our IT department. We are working on getting a bid out for faster internet. That's one. The Tubac Library finally has a color printer that was installed a few weeks ago. We have a new cataloging printer, so cataloging material is going to be faster now. And the Rio Rico Library is in the process of getting a new printer installed.
Okay.
That's, that's that for that.
Go on to number two.
December, we had the San Cayetano Elementary School, their parents' site council meeting was at the Rio Rico Library. It was an initiative brought forth by the director, by the principal, and it was a good turnout. There were 12 parents, and they had storytime, and they got a little tour of the library and of our online services, online resources. That's it for that.
Three?
Staff training. So staff is still continuing to take online courses, through videos that are provided for free by the Arizona State Library, so that they stay informed. And I think I put the titles on your report right there. That's it for that.
Four?
I'm going to defer this one to Denise, so she can talk about the holiday craft kits.
Lender the microphone there.
So the main library did 50 stockings for Christmas for the children. The stockings consisted of candy canes, certain crafts, the crafts were build your own Christmas tree, we gave them all the supplies, also write a letter to Santa. So the stockings were distributed to the libraries, and they were all out, like, for the first week.
Very good. Very good. Five?
I will have Denise talk about this one, too.
Okay.
So I've been in, I've been talking to Luis, he's our teen coordinator. We've been talking about, he's going to start a finance club at the library. This finance club is to help the youth or any patron that would like to join, we don't have any ages, on the importance of finance, how to control your money, credit, the value of money, personal finance, risks, it has to get your credit card, and all that type of stuff. So we've been working together to establish a set schedule for the club. We're working on the flyer as well. Right now, what we have is going to be a one hour per session. We still don't know what days we're going to be working with. I think we're just going to start and see how many people show up, how many people sign up to the club. It's kind of hard to do it because of the pandemic right now, cases are going up, so we don't want to have a lot of people gathered up in the library. He is going to talk to the school counselors, he's going to talk about his program, and he's going to send the flyers to them. He's going to keep in touch with the schools, and the counselor is going to let him know if any kids are interested in signing up to the club.
Okay. Six?
Is there time for question, or do I have to wait?
You have to wait. Six?
And this one will also be spoken about by Denise.
So in February, Laura Rodriguez, the children's coordinator, and myself are going to be attending an in-person summit. This summit is the importance of early literacy and the importance of early education. It's gonna, I attended three years ago, and I won the scholarship. This year, I also applied for the scholarship, and I also got the scholarship to go to the summit. It's really fun because you have hands-on learning experiences, and I guess with the pandemic, they're going to teach us how to handle the situations with the children, the pandemic, and how we can do more activities without putting in risk the children or staff or anything like that. And that's it.
Good, Denise. Seven?
It was a very busy past couple of months. I did finish up the data report that I sent out to the, that is required by the state library. And as you see in my report, I, there was a COVID section that was added to all the libraries in the state, and how we're maneuvering and how we're doing our programs, which are still grab and go. Everything was turned in on time, and all that data report helps when I want to apply for future grants, which I'm planning to do. And that's it for the data report. Any question? Well, I'll wait for the question.
Eight?
E-Rate funding. We got funded for E-Rate, so yay, we got $14,300 back, and that is reimbursable from the internet that we pay at the main library and at Tubac. It gets a little tricky with Rio Rico and Sonoyta, but we did get that reimbursement, and that reimbursement is helping us get, it helped us get the new printers out. It helped us get the new printers out to the libraries.
Good. Nine?
I am currently working on the South 32 Community Grant for the teen space. As you can see, the picture that Denise, it was provided a while ago, but as, just a refresher of the furniture that we're going to be requesting, the space, and I'm currently working on the narrative, so I'm going to be working on that for the next couple of weeks. It's going actually very well. I have reached out to Kelly Huber-
Good.
And she's been great. So if you don't see me, or if you see my door locked, it's because I'm working on this. So that's it.
Thank you. Veronica?
I just want to thank the staff for the detailed report. I do have a couple of questions, specifically in the finance program that you're putting together. What expertise are you bringing in to do the programming? Who's actually going to present?
Luis, he's going to be doing the program. He is taking some college classes. He is a student, so he has some knowledge on finance.
Okay. Just a comment and a suggestion, I think our communities are filled with folks that have retired from the finance profession. I would suggest that you possibly look at speakers from our community that could enhance your program with hands-on, experienced people, giving you some guidance, or even just giving a small talk. But I do know that sometimes we ignore the fact that we have so many retired folks that really are a wealth of knowledge. Okay? So just something to offer there. The other thing I would like to know, when you do programs for children, crafts and that sort of thing, obviously, if they're writing a letter to Santa, for example, it's enhancing their communication, written communication skills. So a little bit more information on when you do these kinds of programs, what are you targeting? What are the, what is it that you're trying to build as far as a learning experience for the children? I'd kind of just like to see that, because obviously you can say, oh, we did crafts. Okay. But what did the crafts really do? And that's for the future, but thank you.
Okay. Brian?
Thank you. I want to commend the administration, the library administration, all the points of this report, and specifically having the parent site council from San Cayetano from the elementary school, and would encourage you to invite other site councils to utilize the library. Thank you.
Marva? Ed?
Yes, I forgot to mention that we had a couple of events with FANS for book distributions for the Nogales Christmas event. And then when the author, Ronnie Capen, came to the library, we also had a table out in front and circulated books. And we got a good response in our picture, our image, to the community for book distributions that were free.
Okay. Thank you, Ed. Juanita?
Yes, thank you very much for the report and for the work that the staff is doing amidst the pandemic. I had a question on the report, the annual data report. Can we access this online at the Arizona State Library? Do they make this available to the public?
Yes, it's available. I will reach out to Chris Guerra and get the email for you. We're at the site.
Nan?
Excuse me, yes. First of all, I want to say, when I drove by the library this morning, I was delighted to see all of the Valentine's hearts on the dinosaur. If you haven't seen those yet, make sure you go by. I think you're all doing a terrific job. Keep it up. Keep your spirits up. I did have one quick question. On the report, on your statistical report in the packet, you have website hits for December 1111, and then you have no figure for December 2020. Is that something I'm not understanding?
That was a typo. That was probably a typo.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, you'll take care of that. Thank you, Nan.
Thanks a lot.
Marva? Future agenda items? Ed? Juanita? Nan?
Yes, I'd like to put an agenda item on for February on audible book use and-
On what?
Audible books.
Audible.
Available through the library's present apps. Daniza was very helpful to me the other day when I was looking for an audible book-
Okay, just-
And I realized how little I knew about it, so maybe we can put that on.
Thank you. Veronica?
I'd like to ask the board to consider revisiting the surveys. We at one point talked about taking on some of the recommendations that were easy and not necessarily costly to implement, so that if that could be something a subcommittee would take on for discussion, and we could just look at it again. It was something, again, as I said, that was previously addressed, and we never followed up.
Okay. Would you do me a favor, Veronica, please? And would you send an email with a specific agenda item listed to Daniza, please? Okay? So I make sure I get that right. Brian?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll now proceed to, the date of our next meeting is February the 10th, 2022? No, it's the 10th. I had it moved over because I can't be here on the 9th, so I moved it to the 10th. And we already got clearance to use this facility here for the 10th. Thank you. It's on a Thursday, yes. Is there a problem? Does somebody have a problem?
Let me just look.
If you have a problem, please tell me now.
Okay, just a sec.
February the 10th. No?
I've got something else going. I'll read-
Brian?
Okay.
So then our next meeting is on February the 10th, and we'll be right here. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Ed, second by Nan to adjourn this meeting. This meeting is adjourned.
Good job.
Thank you.